For doing the application. And we'll definitely get you to come speak last year and stuff. Testing a little like, let's see what we can, like what we can get. And so we came back to like re- relearn like even this application process. Okay, now we know, now we've got ourselves into what we can make. Well, and it's so cute to like even trade and getting money and that. Like it's just, like it's just nice and nice. So but we, we learned a lot last year. So. I know we talked about bringing. And at the beginning of everything, we have been having a special department. So there's myself and Matt did for our, there's two of us that are staff members. Three advisors and two. Got everybody involved in weird word was kind of that. We were doing this and we also had. He went to so it just, we got my whole work done. It was just through the newsletter and everything. This year we expanded first month from my kid. So it's just, it'll be. They should be over here soon. They were having a presentation in the work room.
It was awesome things. Crest what their. Change a lot of people. Their black house. Which um we had. Our first one, I would say. And then we saw. Some of these. Same guys that I had before. But that fact that. A few guys. Long time residents. Still they, they, they could move out of the building. No. Well, that was a Harrison region. They kind of backed them off. Harrison is. That's why you're getting, getting resistance. How the speaker, the speaker's. As the administrator, we've gone through. We've gone through some of the administrators. His latest role. Isn't it church and it's very. Very highly supported. It's a change. It's a power source. Speaker's. You thought the news. Oh. We had that thing. Had. Kind of fine.
Good evening, guests. Our session ran a little long. They'll be in here in just a second. We'll get going here. Thanks for your patience. Presentation from Zion's Bank. They always bring us these chocolate covered nuts. We don't allow them to speak to us unless they bring them. So when you see the council up here eating, it's because most of us been here since four something. So. We'll try to be discreet, but. We all got our own box, man.
Well. Everybody but Doug.
No, he took, he's, he took Doug's. Oh, that's true.
So we still have one.
Well, you got two. There should be six.
Yeah. Unless the mayor doesn't get one.
It's true.
There's one sitting in front of everybody.
Where's that one?
Well, oh, no, no, it's. They're sharing up down there. Poor Jeremy.
No. Mike took you. Eight P M. To six A M. They'll make the shut. Whoa, I just had the packet pulled up. What happened to it? Okay, Lisa, we ready? Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your patience. Welcome to our Tuesday, July fifteenth, South Island City Council meeting. Entertained motion that we begin.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll have a moment of silence. After that, council member Howard will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any employee recognition tonight? I didn't, aware of any? Are we? Sure any? Next is public comment. Invite anybody here that wants to address the mayor and council to come up and tell us your name and tell us what's on your mind. So.
Welcome up to beat the rush. My name is Gary Godfrey and I live on Birch Creek Drive. And I've come to talk a little trash.
Okay.
First, I'd like to thank the council for hiring the, I guess he's a compliance officer. I've seen. Some movement already. And it just makes us aware that there's even. But I appreciate that. We have just the Birch Creek and. Adams come together there. A very, very healthy, longstanding growth of poison ivy. That's shiny green. It's one of the prettiest plants around. Along the whole parkway there. And it's spreading. But that's a topic for another day. My understanding from my. Forty years of residence here. Is that we are currently paying. Thirty-eight dollars. Hundred and thirty-eight dollars per year. For garbage service, plus or minus a few cents in there. And that. Four dollars and nine cents a week. A month, four dollars and nine cents a month. It's actually. Probably one of the great bargains of South Ogden. So I appreciate that very much. I like the dumpsters. They do hold a lot of garbage. They keep the water out. They keep the pests out. The squirrels have to go someplace else for dinner. And so I appreciate that. Now, my understanding is that we have fifty-two weeks of garbage service. We get fifty-two loads of garbage picked up. But in my case. Much of the time, I don't even fill it halfway full. And so. My thought is that since we don't have a green waste facility in South Ogden. Unlike some of our neighbors. And we don't have our vacuum truck anymore. It used to come along in the old days and just slurp up all the leaves that we placed along the edge of the street. I wonder if there's something that the council could work out to give us a break on the garbage instead of saying. Once a week, if occasionally, particularly in the spring and in the fall, when we get lots of green waste, lots of, lots of. Leaves and dead fall and whatnot. If, if we, if it would be okay to have the garbage picked up. Put a couple more sacks in, slip it to the other side of the street and let them pick it up again. It would be a service to the city to help keep it cleaned up on a more regular basis. My neighbor explains it this way. He says they're going to get it sooner or later. Might as well be sooner.
Sure.
So that's my. That's my wish. I have probably thirty trees. And it's a struggle every fall to get it taken care of. And just a little bit more leeway on the use of the garbage cans would be really helpful. It doesn't mean that there would be any more. It simply means that if you figure fifty-two weeks. You just put the surplus from some weeks into the empty cans of other weeks. And it would work out and nobody would, nobody would get a black eye over it. So that's, that's my suggestion.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
We'll talk to Public Services about that. Anybody else want to address the council? Yeah, come up, sir.
Mayor Porter, council members, my name is Dave Terry. Probably have had some conversation recently about an event that I host every year. And I was not able to attend the council meeting last time, but I was able to listen to the proceedings. And I, I guess first off, wanted to invite all of the city government, Mayor Porter, council members. You'd join us for our event. It's on Friday, the twenty-fifth, up at Friendship Park. I also wanted to just make myself available, whether here or even offline, whatever. If you guys ever have any questions about. What's, what our event is or have any apprehension about it or want to question what we're doing, why we're doing it. I just wanted to make myself available that you guys could reach out anytime. So I'm happy to answer questions if you have any. So.
Okay. Appreciate you talking with Summer and, and being available. So. Okay, thanks, Dave. Anybody else want to address council? All right, next response to public comments. So yeah, Mr. Godfrey will check with your public services. We'll run that by them, see what they think about that. Is that microphone on? I feel like it's very.
Doesn't sound very loud.
Very loud. I'll talk loud, but not everybody can. Not everybody's got a big mouth like the mayor. And yeah, Dave, thank you. Well. Most of our concerns, I think, have been addressed through you and Assistant C. Madripol. All right, next is item four, the consent agenda. There's two items there. Approval of the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five council minutes and also our July first work session minutes. Any changes or corrections to those minutes? Okay, also on there is for advice and consent for the appointment of Katie Walkwist to the planning commission. Invite Katie to come up and introduce yourself quickly here. So convince the council to say yes, I guess.
Oh, that's pressure. I will be fast. I think I know most of you already. My name's Katie Walkwist. I've lived here in South Ogden for twenty-seven years. Three different neighborhoods in the city. All three of them are, they're like different worlds a little bit, but that's one of the things I love about South Ogden. We kind of have these unique personalities. Married to Scott. He's a lifelong resident. A lot of you know him. And then I have two kids who are both in their twenties, both way cooler than me. And I've just been really involved in the Ogden area for a long time through my work, through different groups I've been in. Love Ogden, but my family laughs at me because whenever someone asks if I'm from Ogden, like I have to stop them and say I'm from South Ogden. I can't let it go. I have to correct them. So anyway, don't know what else to tell you. I'm a big believer in if you have an opportunity and the capacity to help your community, then you should really try to do that. So. That's what I'm trying to do is live up to that. So I'm excited to learn. I think I'm excited to learn. I don't know. Maybe it's gonna be terrible, but I think it's gonna be a great learning experience. So I'm excited. So. If you have any questions, just. You know where to find.
Resume was in the.
Yeah.
In the packet and.
Yeah.
Big fan. I've tried to get her to do this for years. So finally.
I think mostly my son is the person that people really love. He's very popular. So my son, Adam, is disabled and he's the boss of the world. So. Anyway, he's popular, but I'm, I'm pretty good too. So.
King of South Ogden, he is.
He's the king of South Ogden. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight. Yeah, she will take the place of John Bradley, who after years of service is asked to, to leave that board. So. Okay, is there any other questions? Entertained a motion that we approve the two items on the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're official, Katie. Welcome. All right, we have five discussion action items. First is consideration of ordinance twenty-five dash zero nine. Declaring ordinance twenty-five dash zero three as null and void and approving a franchise agreement with Rocky Mountain Power. So. Mr. Dixon, if you'd like to do that. We also have Mr. Nagro here.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really a formality. It's a, has to do with the timing of the franchise agreement being signed by the city and Rocky Mountain Power. Nothing has changed since you last saw this and voted, voted to approve it. It just, the clock, the clock ticked and we missed the, the window to have Rocky Mountain Power get this signed. I think it was, there was a sixty day requirement. So it just necessitated that it come back to you to reapprove or deny. And, and then we'll be sure to get it signed accordingly. So. Lisa, do you have anything to add?
So it, it wasn't really a matter of them signing it. It was, they have to file. Some paperwork within the sixty days with the city recorder and that just didn't get done. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Before we vote, just Kirk, appreciate you being here. Appreciate your support of our U. City Council as well. Thanks a lot for what you guys do.
I want to be fair to say it's really, it, it was all me. This is really a Rocky Mountain Power procedural issue. The city's been great. We just unfortunately. Fall got dropped and vacation in the middle of it. So we apologize for having you guys to address this again and appreciate you taking.
Yeah, it took all three minutes. We'll never get back. Thanks. All right, entertained motion. We approve ordinance twenty-five dash zero nine.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. That's a real call vote. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, consideration of ordinance twenty-five dash ten, amending the consolidated fee schedule for requested police presence. Chief Park, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I was kind of surprised. I didn't realize Peter had taken off, but he actually wrote the staff report. Lisa contacted him, said, hey, you're gonna do the staff report. So let's start working on it. Next thing I know, Peter turned around and sent one out. And I was like, thank you, Peter. He's presenting instead. Right a minute ago, Matt was, hey, you're presenting, right? Like, oh, sure. Anyway, this is a. An item that has actually been discussed outside of council meetings that I've discussed with prior. Department heads. I brought it up recently again with Peter and Summer, and they've been very good to work with on this. The situation is we have construction companies, power companies, internet companies running the cables, whatever they're doing, right? And they'll call and say, what, what's your hourly rate for police officers? Because we need traffic control at this location or we need somebody at this private event that we're hosting. And the difficulty has always been, how are we going to establish that? So we basically turn everybody down because there's never been a fee that we can say, yeah, we, we charge this much per hour. So in working with Peter and Summer, it took a little effort and I appreciate their work on this with me very much. The figure of a hundred dollars an hour was arrived at to help cover the overtime rate that the officer would pay. The officer would not be being paid a hundred dollars an hour. Their administrative expenses build into that as well. So the officer would, would still make time and a half for coming out and working these extracurricular activities. But the remainder of that above what their time and a half rate would be administrative costs, gas costs, vehicle maintenance expense, things of that nature. I presented my. Opinions to both Peter and Summer. They were reviewed and Peter and Summer's here. She disagrees, she'll certainly speak up. But they have agreed that that is a reasonable amount. When the city has looked into, I also spoke with Danielle about what she would end up paying a private security company to come stand in there. And it's right around that. So it's not like we're trying to undercut anybody, but if they want a police officer, this would give us a basis to start charging a fee for that instead of just denying them outright. Again, it would be contingent on availability and making sure that the basic functions of the department are covered. If that was sufficiently covered and we could handle this by having somebody else come in off duty to do it, then that's how we would do it.
Is that similar to other cities then? Did you do, did you check with other cities?
Yeah, there's disparity across the state on how this is handled. It's pretty involved. So jurisdiction in Southern Utah is actually trying to move to have a state law passed. Setting what these amounts would be because there's different amounts across the state and the different companies are paying different fees based on where they're at. So this is a, a topic that's. Being discussed in other areas as well. I've heard anywhere from a hundred and fifty to seventy-five dollars is what they're charging. So I think when we're saying a hundred, I think that's very reasonable all the way around for now. It could end up being a state law at some point, but I don't anticipate it anytime soon.
Questions for Chief? Councilmember Stewart?
So the wages will change every year. So will this be something that comes before us every year for an adjustment? Or will we build something in that?
That's a good question, probably. Because what it was, we actually started at around eighty-five ninety an hour. As the salary increases have adjusted for the current budget since we began this conversation, that's when we looked at it again and moved it up to a hundred dollars. So as those adjustments are made, we will probably be adjusting the fee schedule. Again, these are not going to be paid by the taxpayers. These are by private entities wanting police officers to come to their events.
And we'll track that for a year, like they'll get a feel for how much it really did cost us.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Chief, do you know if the county offers a service as, as the, from the sheriff's department? And does it cover our city if they were to go there?
If they were to.
Like, like if, if we didn't have that service available, we had to deny them previous to this, would they be able to go to the county and get that service for anything within our city?
The only one I'm aware of, and I understand it's in the process of being changed, is Ogden City. A lot of departments are facing manpower shortages and they just don't want to deal with this issue at all. I understand Ogden City's changing the way they're doing it. I believe, I don't have the hard facts on this, but I believe they're allowing their officers to contract directly with the companies and getting paid directly by the companies. I have concerns with that under. Fair Labor Standards Act. They were using your police car. They're wearing your uniform. If something happens to them, are they working as your officer or are they a private contractor for this private company? By. Going forward with the arrangement that's proposed tonight, they would be our employees. But as I understand it, the only ones that are doing this now in the county are those Ogden officers doing it on the side. And it's my understanding again, don't take it as gospel. That their department is aware of the concerns I've just mentioned as far as using their car and their uniform and presenting themselves as an Ogden officer when they're out doing it. But they've been going all over the county doing this stuff.
So two, two follow-up questions to that. If, if it's our officers on our time and our billing, it's also our liability.
Correct.
And are there no other, and that's why I asked about the county. If the county doesn't offer that, are there private firms in the area that offer this?
Um, that is a very good question because I don't know that a private firm would have the authority to do that. If you have a private contractor and the city's contracting on a road project and they have people conducting traffic control, that's one thing. If you have a. Power company that's just got to run a line across the street and they need to shut down the hour, the road for an hour or two. That's not a contract with the city. That's the power company using their right of way to access that. I don't know that a private company would have the authority to shut down that road.
Yeah, I don't know if they do either.
Good questions though.
I think it's a good opportunity for our officers to make a little extra money. I think that's good. Will, and will the city have to pay this amount too? Like say Shakespeare in the Park, we had a police officer.
So I worked that out with Danielle for the Shakespeare in the Park event specifically. And instead of paying the flat fee. We agreed at that time that we would just identify what the amount was for the exact officer. What this is going to do is standardize it for everybody. So when somebody calls, how much is it for an officer? We can say X, Y, or Z because they want a number upfront, right? Internally, if it's a special event that we haven't. Anticipated or something like that, or we're budgeting for a special event, we can more specifically say after the event, this is what it's cost us. And it's, it's just in-house. So it would be less.
We just bill ourselves for that then? We just bill ourselves for that then? Yeah.
Councilmember Stevens?
I support this, I think it's long overdue to come before us. But on the private events, is there a certain number of participants? For example, if I have a private event and I have 50 people come, is there an amount that I give you of how many people are attending that we would send an officer? Or is this a contract between myself and, and the police officer?
No, it'd be through the city.
Okay.
It wouldn't be directly with the officer. And that's one of the things we would be looking at when these requests come in. Most often, it's not an actual private event, it's usually a construction type thing. But if it was a private event, we would ask, well, how many people do you expect? And if they say, well, we think we're going to have 300 to 500 people there and we want one cop, I'd be like, well, you're going to get two or you're not getting any. Because one guy and 500, that's not really even close to an appropriate amount. So we would look at each event. Certainly, we'd be working with event organizers to see, all right, is this actually going to be a sufficient number of officers? We're not looking to gouge anybody, we're just trying to make sure things get taken care of.
So would they pay the city and then the city would pay the officers that were attending that?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor, I think we could even tonight suggest, maybe on the first meeting in January, that we look at our fees and maybe increase the, the amount at that particular time if, if needs be.
Yeah, I think, I'd be interested in tracking it to see how often has this even happened? You know, how the officers feel to be able to cover their requests and then we can make some more decisions. But I think it's a great start. Other comments? Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Item motion to approve ordinance 25-10.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? It's also a roll call vote. Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, consideration of ordinance 25-11, amending South Orange City Code 10-4-8 over fence regulations concerning nets. Alaca, please.
Okay, so the addition of this code is stemming from a comment that was made back in May 20th. I believe it was part of the public comment section of the May 20th city council meeting. A resident came up and explained that he lives right next to a golf course and fortunately, a lot of the golf balls are going to his property and damaging. And so he just wanted to put up a net to be able to protect his belongings. So after that city council meeting, administrative staff along with building staff had an internal meeting about the best way to move forward. And it was decided to add a little section under the fence ordinance talking specifically about netting. Planning staff called other cities, and as you can imagine, it's not a very common code. But I was able to find something under St. George's city code and even one out of state in Colorado. And both of those are included in your staff report. This ordinance was discussed on the, at the June 12th planning commission meeting where we held a public, sorry, public hearing, but there was no public comment. It was forwarded with a positive recommendation from planning commission and now it's in front of you for your consideration.
Questions for Alaca?
I have a couple, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
On the, I know it's, the height of it, it was six feet. And the, does he have to, what happens if he obstructs his neighbors or, or something like that? Is that a process by which we have to contact the neighbors and having, if he's going to put up the net then?
That's not part of the code right now, or at least not the proposed language. As far as the max height, I believe it's, it can go up to 30 feet. Anything over six feet would need a building permit. But we can look into that. Are you just worried about obstructing their view?
Well, the, yes, for the neighbors or the people in the area there. I'm, I'm sure that they're protecting the, the property of the individual, but I don't know if they need to have neighbors indicating that there is going to be a, a net put up in their yard. It has to be in the backyard, isn't that right?
Yes, I believe it says, yeah, the rear or the side, not in the front.
The side, the side that abuts the golf course.
Right.
The neighbors would be not looking through the net, really.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of if there's a scenario where, I don't think there would be any need to put one on the side, but you never know. I know for this resident specifically, he was just looking at putting something in the back. And the height wasn't necessarily discussed. The 30 feet just kind of came from looking at an average height of a home, which is anywhere from 30 to 35 feet. If you looked at the other codes that were included, they kind of go up to 60, 75 feet. I thought that was a bit much, but.
It is.
Planning commission wanted, did want to add the stipulation of a possible exception if it's over 30, but that would be after discussing it with building. And it would be a case-by-case basis. And here we're primarily talking about a handful of properties, only those that are abutting the golf course.
That's our only golf course, right?
Yeah, for golf safety. I did also include four courts, but those have different standards. The max height for them would be 10 feet, and they would have to follow the same setbacks as what we have for our court ordinance.
Mayor, so this would not prohibit a resident from putting their own driving range in their backyard and putting up a 30-foot net?
It would, because it has to be your side or backyard.
Yeah, it's your backyard.
Right.
Oh, but some, but.
But I think, I was just trying to find it, I think it says.
Where it butts the golf course?
And I think we needed to change the word to a butts because the St. George ordinance uses a butts and ours uses something else. I was just trying to find it, but I think we need to change that word to where it butts because that was important.
Because the intent is not to allow backyard.
Right.
30-foot driving.
It's not your own personal recreation, it's for your own personal protection.
It says.
Adjacent to.
So it's on, it's on page 83 in the, in the packet. Under 5.2, it says golf safety nets may be permitted only on lots where a property is adjacent to a golf course. Safety nets, or then it goes through the sizes. And I think that we need to put them, that safety nets will only be permitted where it abuts a golf course, because you could have a home that's adjacent to a golf course and not a property line that would require that.
I can change that.
I think, I think what Councilmember Howe suggested.
Yeah, I used the term. I used the term.
Yeah, no, you said it.
I'd read it somewhere, I thought it was on there. Okay. Okay. Should we make that change in the ordinance then, as we? As we approve the ordinance, we need to make that, adding the word abut. It's a good word. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, item motion to approve ordinance 25-11. With the change to adding the word abut, abutting the golf course.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Alaca. All right, item D, consideration of resolution 25-23, approving the city pickup contributions to Tier 2 public safety and firefighter retirement. Summer, please.
Okay. So actually, the next two resolutions fell under the same staff report. And then in addition to that, I also added some changes to the entire section, section four. It was this whole rabbit hole, right? So.
There's a lot of red.
There's a lot of red. But ultimately, as I was adding the language for the retirement benefits that we discussed in the last meeting, I thought, why not update this whole section while I'm at it? Because otherwise, we're going to have to bring this back at another time anyway. So there were only a handful, if any substantive changes to the rest of the policy manual, but I did add the language for both the pickup contribution and the retirement, the employee, employer match for the rest of the employees. So I don't know exactly where to start, other than right off the bat. Does anyone have any questions about what I sent over to you?
Could you review the cost to the city for this?
Yes, so that was included in the staff report. Ultimately, the, the cost for the Tier 2 public safety and firefighter pickup contributions is about $70,000 a year. So that's for this first year, and that is considering a, for, the picking up the entirety of that 4.73%, which is the maximum we're allowed to pick up right now as an employer for those, for those plans. I will say that, that amount that you designate this year is an irrevocable designation, meaning you can't, three years from now, say, just kidding, I just want to do 3% of the pickup. So once you designate the 4.73, you can't go back from that amount. Most employers, though, that, that have gone through this process have designated the, the full amount. So I wouldn't recommend a half measure, but that's, that's your prerogative as a council. When we complete that form, you can put any amount that you want in there and we can move up from there, but we can't move down from there, if that makes sense.
Councilmember Howe?
Summer, if, if, so the 4.73 is the, the state number now?
Right.
If we approve 4.73, we can't go backwards. If the state increases that maximum match, we could go up, but we would have to review that and put it into a, a new ordinance.
We wouldn't necessarily have to put it into a new ordinance as the, the resolution that we prepared gives us that ability to just do so through your budgeting authority. So every year, we, if we got an increase, let's say next year it moved up to 4.83, you could designate that you wanted to continue picking up that additional percentage by approving the, the budget for the year.
Right.
Without having to do a new ordinance.
Right, so this goes into the budget right now at that 70,000-ish mark, whatever it is. We put that into the budget, and then next year when we review the budget again, it would be either an increase because of personnel or an increase because of the percentage increase.
Yep.
Right?
Yep, so you wouldn't have to redo the, the resolution again. Great question. Any other question about the, the Tier 2 pickup amount?
Summer, maybe, Mayor, just for clarification, and this amount has been incorporated in the current?
Yes, it's baked in.
Budget. Baked in.
Baked in, that's our term.
Yeah. Yes, we did include the, the full 4.73 in the approved budget.
Summer doesn't cook a lot.
Yeah, I don't ever cook unless the numbers, just kidding. I just said that on the record. I'm not the finance person, though, so it's fine.
So it's fine, I'm just HR.
HR. Okay, so any other questions about the, the Tier 2? If not, then we can move on to the 401K match. So the, the intent here would be to provide a, a 401K match for those employees who are ineligible for this Tier 2 pickup. I think although Councilwoman Stevens brought this to our attention for the entire group, we feel like this is a good way to kind of balance the retirement benefits overall by doing the pickup for those that, that we, we can do the pickup for, and then providing this 401K match for those who are ineligible for us doing that, so.
So you're talking about the police and the fire on this?
So the, anybody who is Tier 2 public safety police or Tier 2 fire would get the pickup amount and they would not be eligible for the employer match. But your Tier 1 public safety or Tier 1 fire or Tier 1 employee, public employee or Tier 2 public employee. So there's a lot of different programs. Really, there's just two that are eligible for that employee, that employee match, excuse me, for that pickup amount. That's 31 employees that are eligible for that. So it would be the remainder, remainder of our full-time employees that would be eligible for the proposed 401K match from the employer. So the numbers we worked off of after our discussion were the 6, 6%, so half of 6% or the first 3%, if that makes sense. And we talked a little bit about a 401K or a 457. There is some tax advantages to the city matching into a 401K versus the 457. So that would be our recommendation, is to be able to capture those tax benefits. However, we would recommend using employer, employee contributions to either a 401K or 457 as a match eligible dollar. So if I wanted to put 6% to my 457, the employer would put 3% to my 401K. Does that make sense? So if the employee finds there's a benefit to doing the 457, that's great. We would still match on that. Let's see. The other thing that we talked about last time that, that we probably need to clarify is that URS is not able to do any kind of a vesting schedule. So if we wanted to say you're not eligible for your matched dollars until you've been here four years or five years, URS is not going to be able to do that for us. If that's important to you, that we find somebody who will provide us a vesting schedule, we can go out and find that. We can go to Mission Squared, which is a, a public sector retirement company, John Hancock. There's a lot of different financial entities out there that we could talk to to see if they would offer some kind of a vesting schedule for us. It just means that those dollars would be held outside of URS for our employees. So that's, that's something we can look at. If not, we would just stay with URS. And I do think that just offering this incentive is a pretty good retention tool in and of itself. But if you feel like we need to strengthen that by adding a vesting schedule, we can definitely look at that. Does anybody feel strongly about moving in that direction? Okay.
I mean, something like that helps with retention, but recruitment's a big deal too. So I think we start with it.
Agreed. So then the, the, the numbers that we've kind of put together for this match, if every other employee who was eligible for this contribution actually put in 6% and the city would have matched 3%, it would cost $165,000 a year to do that. That would be maximum for the year. However, right now. However, right now, only eleven employees are contributing 6%. Eleven are contributing 4%, and fourteen are contributing 1%. So realizing the goal of this would be to increase that, we went back to see what industry standards were for growth when once an employer match is added. And the numbers we we generated said we could expect between 25% and and 40% increase in participation. So that would bring an estimated number of between sixty-eight thousand and seventy-seven thousand dollars a year if we saw that kind of participation. We just don't know. Maybe nobody is gonna be able to do a full 6%. And it's really, it's really not gonna cost us that much at all. That's the nice thing about the match. If nobody participates, it doesn't cost us anything. If they do, then we kind of know what the cap is and what the the average is gonna be.
Okay.
Any questions about those?
What about the council members?
I'm still working with URS on that. Um, one of the things that did come up, we have we have just a handful of post-retired employees here. According to URS, we cannot contribute to their 401K. We can't contribute to their retirement at all. And so in trying to decide how we would take care of them and and add them into this scenario, we talked about maybe requiring those post-retirees to contribute to be contributing 9% to get their 3%. And that didn't make a whole lot of sense to me at first, but essentially, they would be, we would be taking the 3% match and giving it to them in cash, but requiring them to put it into their own retirement, because they can save. We just can't save on their behalf. Does that make sense? So we would force that that additional contribution for them. Because I I don't feel good about giving that to them in cash when everybody else is having it deferred. But by moving that up to 9% to those post-retiree retirees, we are forcing that that 3% to be deferred. They're they're basically moving it around. But it's a requirement for them.
So you say post-retirees?
Post-retiree. We only have three post-retirees right now who work for us and would be eligible for this.
Do you have an idea of the cost?
For?
Those?
Three.
For those three? They're factored into this. They they're part of that 401K match.
Seventy-seven thousand or whatever?
Yeah, mhm, yep. Yeah, between the sixty-eight and seventy-seven numbers, that there those three people are factored into that, those numbers. So it wouldn't be on top of that. It would, they would just have a different rule, so that we would make sure it was being deferred instead of just being cashed out.
Would we just have another paragraph that addresses that?
Yep, I would just add that additionally to the policy. So speaking of the policy, then, there is a lot of red in that. If if I can just go over, unless anything really caught your eye, my goal was for for this policy update was to really just streamline the language, simplify the policy while still keeping all of the the important points in there. There was a lot of redundancy. I could tell that there was policy added without taking out old policy. So it just needed some some good cleanup. And so for the most part, that's what what happened here. Moving around some of the sections and then removing some of the sections, you can see the notes that I've got in there that just say, this isn't a benefit. So for example, workers' compensation, not a benefit. That's a requirement. FMLA is actually covered in another section, so, and also a mandatory requirement from an employer. One of the one of the changes that that I made here was under the life insurance section. So I did remove the section that said that we had a fifty thousand dollar life insurance policy for sworn officers. We do not have that policy in force. And for as far back as I can find, we haven't since 2000. We've, our records have gone back to 2009, and we have not found such a policy. So I don't know where that language came from. I've checked with URS, I've checked with PHP, and I've checked with the trust, our three insurance carriers. None of them have a policy in force that would reflect that either. So the the only thing that I can assume is that perhaps many moons ago, the only group of employees who had life insurance were sworn officers. And when we updated the our our insurance policy and started covering all employer employees, we added the language below that showed a twenty-five thousand dollar life insurance and a twenty-five thousand dollar accidental death and dismemberment policy for all employees, but just didn't take the language out that reflected a fifty thousand dollar policy for sworn officers.
So we still do have the twenty-five thousand.
So we do have the twenty-five thousand and the twenty-five thousand for all employees. We just don't have a separate policy for sworn officers. So I'm happy to go back to our insurance company during renewal next year and see what what that policy would cost us. But right now, I, not having one in force, I would recommend taking the language out right now before it becomes an issue. So so that was probably the biggest change to this section of policy other than the the 401K match and the Tier Two pickup.
Summer, could you send us, once you get this all the red out and a cleaned up policy?
Yeah, I think we included that. So at the end of the?
Did I see it? Did I read it?
Much shorter.
Yeah, it is much shorter, which, again, was my intent.
Very nice.
I did read that, yes.
So Chief wanted me to clarify a couple things, which the language is in here, but I can see there it needing some clarification. Number one, we have some retirement benefits that only are employees who that were hired prior to nineteen ninety-seven are eligible for. I'm not making any recommendation to change any of those benefits. And one of those being them being able to have medical insurance for five years or be able to to get a a a lieu payment if they choose not to pick that up. And also, there's a 10% of their salary payment for five years after they retire. So that that we have, I believe, eight employees left in the organization that will qualify for that. And as soon as those eight are retired, then we'll take that language out entirely, because no other employee would be eligible for that benefit. And then the other thing is the, under the retirement benefit section, the payout upon retirement of sick and vacation. They, anybody who leaves the organization takes their vacation with them. So anybody gets that. It's not a real retirement benefit if you leave because you go to another organization, you take that. But the retirement benefit is that you can also take up to four hundred and eighty hours of your sick leave with you when you retire, when you retire officially, not just leave. So you have to be eligible for a URS retirement to qualify for that benefit. So I will clean that language up a little bit, just to make sure that that there, no change is reflected there, but just in case you had any questions. Any other questions about?
So why did you pick up February eighteenth, nineteen ninety-seven?
I didn't do that. I don't know what happened there. I assume it was a council meeting that we said, they said, I don't, I wasn't here. Okay, you know why they picked that date?
Just when they decided to eliminate that benefit for future employees.
Yep.
I always wondered why they picked up that date.
I don't know.
That's right before I go. Someone actually put a pen to it and said, what are we doing?
Yeah. Yep.
Is that when they first hired a city manager? I'm just saying.
You can't keep doing this.
This is unsustainable.
Yeah.
But good for those that hired on.
Yep, before that. Uh, you know, the only other substantive change, I would say, and it's more procedural, under the catastrophic sick bank, sick leave bank, right now, we have those who are qualifying for FMLA and don't have enough sick leave or vacation leave to get them through. We we have a bank of leave that they can apply for hours out of to get them through their their FMLA leave, which is great. It's a it's a great benefit for those who are really dealing with some catastrophic illness in their family. Procedurally, though, right now, we have a committee who is determining who gets that leave and who doesn't. And I feel a little wonky about, that's a technical term. I feel a little bit wonky about having other employees start diving into the medical issues of their coworkers. And I'm sure that there was, that made sense at some point when it was put in. And I can understand wanting a lot of perspective when you're divvying out this money to make sure that there's an even distribution amongst departments. However, I I think that we could really get into some some HIPAA violations. And even if the employee is is providing that medical information to a group, which seems like not a great request of an employer, but even if they decided they wanted to, as part of the discussion, I feel like we could start asking some HIPAA HIPAA-related questions that could get a little bit dicey. And so my recommendation is to take that out and to let the department head of wherever that employee's coming from, and me as the assistant city manager, make that determination, because I'm going to have that that purview of how we're distributing it across the organizations, and the department head's going to know what's happening in that person's in a particular position. So let us make that determination, and then any appeals can go to the city manager at that point. So the three of us together would be making that determination rather than getting a committee into the the decision.
And maybe put a confidentiality code in there.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
With the way HIPAA is now, you you best.
And it still says in there that requests will be considered by a panel. So you're you're talking about changing that wording?
That that panel would just be me and the and the department head, essentially, instead of a committee. Sorry, I did add Peter in there as well. So that would be the panel. Because he has, he, the finance manager is important because he knows how much money we have set aside. So he's the one that keeps the bank. And so he will be important, a part of the decision-making, to know how much we can disperse to each person.
Summer?
The three of us would be the panel.
Is this a common, do all cities have this bank?
It's more common. Everybody does it a little bit different. So in some organizations, it's funded differently. So a lot of organizations have use it or lose it at the end of the year. If people haven't used certain vacation accruals, then that amount that, instead of losing it, goes in to fund this bank. So sometimes they're funded differently, but it's it's pretty commonplace. Have something like this, yeah. Good question.
The city manager's decision is the final decision, is that correct?
Mhm, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions about the policy?
A lot of work, thank you for all that.
So now we just have those two that are your consideration.
Okay. Yeah, please.
This is just a phrasing question. Can you clarify, under, it says, yeah, I'm trying to find it. Under retirement plans, so zero four point zero four five retirement plans, so the cleaned up is on page one thirteen, two B. It says the following positions that are possibly eligible to exempt from retirement in accordance with. Can you phrase that a different way or explain to me? What does that mean, possibly eligible to exempt from retirement?
So the language, so employers will sign on with URS, and we've done that as an employer. URS only allows so many people from each organization to exempt from URS participation. And so employers can designate, because it can't be more than 10% of their population, so employers designate who those groups or those individual positions are. And so that's that's what this section is about. And we don't necessarily make those eligibility decisions. So I think the language here is trying to say, of these positions, you can try to tell URS you're eligible for this exemption, but we don't make that just determination. Does that make sense?
Why would they want to exempt from the retirement?
Because they maybe don't think that they're going to be in the system long enough to actually have a pay a benefit. So if you don't believe you're going to be in public service long enough to to get a a benefit from them, then you may want to exempt from that. And in in lieu of having your monies go to a into URS, then often the employee employers will take that 18% and put it directly into a 401K for those employees. And so then, if they're only gonna be around four years, they can take their four years' worth of 401K monies to the private sector, for example.
And so if if a person only works for four years in the public sector, and they've contributed or they've participated with URS, they can't take that with them?
No.
Oh.
Yeah. That's bad. Yeah. So there's there's kind of, we've got these these employees who are eligible for that possible exemption, possibly eligible for this exemption. In addition now, as Tier Two employees, you can choose to have a defined contribution plan, which basically puts their monies in a 401K instead of the retirement system. So often, people, again, who don't think they're going to have twenty-five years of retirement or twenty-five years of service in a public sector, they will choose that 401K option instead of the retirement benefit option, so they can leave earlier and take their 401K money. Good question. Anything else before I sit down? Anything else before I sit down?
Speaking of, thank you so much. All right, entertain motion that we approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, this two is a roll call vote. Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Great. Uh, item E X in the ratio of resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four, entertain a motion, we approve that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Okay, Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Smythe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Uh, next reports, direction to city manager, we'll start with Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in our public comment, we've had uh an individual talk about poison ivy. Uh, could our uh public service department maybe go out and check that out and, and see if they can correct that for us there?
I've, I've made a note to talk with Mr. Anderson to see if it is within the public right of way. And if it is the city's responsibility, then we'll take appropriate actions.
I appreciate the, our resident bringing that up. Um, also, I went out to the uh nature park and I looked at the, the splash pad and I also looked at the uh, the play, uh, the playground. Um, there is uh a lot of work that needs to be done on the playground. In fact, at the bottom of one of the slides, there's a hole uh down there. Um, and I would suggest that we either look at that or maybe even put that on our uh ramp projects to have that done. Uh, but maybe we, maybe we should maybe uh close that slide uh so that no one will become injured with that. But uh, Marianne uh Bronson was the one that brought that to our attention. I went out and looked at that. The other thing is, is that we're uh going through and, and uh some very important documents at the present time. And in fact, the, one of the most important document that we have is that we're setting the budget for the city. And uh, that's one of the most uh significant responsibilities that we as a, as a council uh need to do uh at this particular time. But we talked about uh the pickup and the match. And this is designed to benefit our employees and as the mayor mentioned, uh, possibility of retention for our employees. And so the whole program of the, this that we talked about tonight is for the benefit of those who are working for South Ogden. And uh, we do have some great people working for us and that's our biggest asset is uh not only the equipment, but also the employees that we have. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Smythe?
Thank Danielle for the Shakespeare in the Park. I, I was surprised to see how many people really came. I, I didn't think they'd be that many, really. It's a nice thing to have and, and a good benefit for our city and people. Um, and just, like I said, we just want to get the city cleaned up so that we can have this city a little more beautified than it is lately. I, I don't know what's happened with people not watering their lawns, but there's more dirt than there are in lawns now. And it's crazy, but we'll see what happens.
Paying for the pine, be whether you use it or not, you might as well use it. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
I had a resident call me and they were concerned about um some situations with parking. Um, they said as they travel and try and pull out or turn at corners, that there are trailers that are parked close to the corner and that sit there for a long time, like days and days. Um, and their, their comment or concern was, can we do something? Can we address it? Can we monitor for it a little better? I don't know if it's something that um we could paint so they don't park so close to the corner so that it doesn't provide the problem with the site triangle. Um, they also were concerned, they mentioned about short-term rentals. They said, I know the city is considering allowing short-term rentals and that's going to make it much worse if there's a lot more vehicles parking in close, in close quarters and lots of vehicles. And so um, they just wondered if we could do more or do better or do differently so that there are not so many issues with parked trailers close to intersections that limit the view. Um, and then I, also I wondered um, if we have or if we could get a maintenance schedule for our fire hydrants so that they stay looking better and not run down and scummy. Um, I know that they're, they're functional, they, they're to serve a purpose, but it's nice if they don't look all scummed up.
Like painted, you're thinking like painted?
Painted, yeah. And then um.
Sky projects are gone.
Yeah. But you know, there are other entities that do service projects that maybe would be willing to help with that if, if we posted and solicited, if that's, you know, what we want, but maybe we don't want that, I don't know. Anyway, um, there was one other thing, but I can't remember it right this minute.
Okay.
So I guess that's all for this time, thank you.
Remember, we'll come back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Howard?
I was just gonna say thanks to our city, to our residents, to our staff, to, to every, to all the departments. As we are going over the budget, as we're having these big discussions, South Ogden Days, for example, um, I see some of the other cities, the problems that they're having. And it's, it's nice where we live. It's nice to have the group that we have up here and the staff and, and the personnel and all the efforts that everyone puts together day in, day out. It hands down, we have one of the best cities, so just wanted to say thanks.
Agreed. Councilmember Howe?
Yeah, um, appreciate that, Mayor. Uh, uh, again, kind of reiterate what, what Councilmember Howard said. We've got an awesome city and, and we've, we've got a lot of cool programs, that Shakespeare in the Park, uh, you know, that and Youth Council and South Ogden Days and all that stuff that Don Ille does. And uh, you know, it's just, we got a great city. I love living in the city. Um, a couple of things coming up, uh, the Young Automotive Group is also doing another uh grand opening on the first. Uh, Mike's probably really excited about that. It's a motorcycle store, so.
I have that for ten AM, is that accurate? Ten AM was my invitation.
That's accurate. Uh, we also have the, the Corn Fairy Tour coming, that's end of July, early August, thirty-first through the, the third, I think. And, and you've seen the signs, just to the public's knowledge, those signs are temporary. Don't get scared that we're gonna start doing billboards up and down Washington, but they actually look pretty good, so. Uh, and again, support, support those, those entities that are, that are putting money back into South Ogden, shop South Ogden. Uh, just again, great city, love, love being here and love working for them, so.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Howe stole two of mine.
Oh, thanks.
I'm gonna re, I would expect you'd bring up the Young Automotive uh ribbon cutting. Um, also the Corn Fairy was on my, was on my list. It's a, a good opportunity to highlight um South Ogden and the Ogden area. So that's a, that's a positive thing. Um, if any of you are interested to attend any of those days, uh, you can let the mayor or I know. Um, I know the organizers have said, hey, we'll be sure you guys have some tickets to be able to go over and walk around and just uh take it all in and, and enjoy some uh professional golf. Uh, the only other item on mine was um the Heritage Trail. I'll let the mayor speak to that, but uh there's been some great progress made there uh that we're excited about. And really, uh, for those of you on the committee, it's, it's time to get back together. Uh, we will be ordering the next four monuments this week, I hope. I've talked to bots and uh they're gonna get pricing on, on four more monuments. So that'll give us eight of, I mean, the total, we've got like thirteen or fourteen. So we're gonna be more than halfway um with the funding that we've, we've already raised to date, so. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, last night at Friendship was the Southern's of Utah Pioneer's summer picnic and so I was able to speak. Mr. Dixon spoke, nice dinner with some, some great people and, and they were excited about that first monument being there. They went and took, took a look at it. So we haven't been there, it's just west of the playground at Friendship Park. That's the first, we'll have him around the path there. But they're really great to see that after this many years, really come to fruition. I went to Shakespeare in the Park last Tuesday, I made it for the second of the double features and it was a very entertaining, very, very cool thing. Uh, Fortieth Street, all going well, always phrase it with that, if someone asks you about Fortieth Street being closed. All going well, three weeks until we can drive on that. But then there'll be nightly closures from eight PM to six AM as they tie into Washington Boulevard. So that work will be done at night because they're dealing with Washington, so there's some tie-ins to do there. But we're talking uh three weeks, so uh blessed day, if that happens. Uh, uh, yeah, the, the Corn Fairy Tour is coming and that's gonna be on the Golf Channel every day. So they'll be, you'll be seeing South Ogden on the Golf Channel for hours and hours, four days in a row, that's exciting. And uh, I will be driving a shuttle bus of employees from Golden West Parking Lot to Country Club quite often when I'm not doing ribbon cuttings. So uh, if you need a ride, uh, call me, it'll be fun. Uh, summer, man, teacher summer, and it's just gonna continue. Uh, you saw in your packet, the very last two pages was some information from Century Sewer Improvement District. Uh, they are contemplating a uh property tax increase. And it is now Utah Code that the trustees are to report that in a public meeting. So that is what I am doing now. Uh, a couple of things, so they hadn't raised taxes, twenty-twelve was the last one, a few years ago. And it's like we talked about, it was from twenty-twelve, next one's in twenty-twenty-three. And so now it's playing catch-up because they went eleven years without a tax increase. Uh, so they are proposing uh a tax increase of, it'd be thirteen dollars and twenty-eight cents on a four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar home, so that's a dollar eleven a month if you have the average home. Uh, so thirteen dollars uh increase or twenty-four fifteen if you're a business. Um, and so that is, like the rest of us too, employees, we've changed over out there from, we're changing from chlorine to UV, we still had to have the chlorine going while the UV gets ready and some things like that, plus the growth. So uh, that's the, the reason for the increase this year. There's a public hearing on the eighteenth of August at six PM at the Sewer District Headquarters in, out in Marriott Sladeville. So that is proposed and that does affect the city somewhat, we're more of a pass-through for that, those sewer bills. But uh, small increase, dollar so a month in your property tax for Century Sewer. And there's any questions on that, that was the last couple of pages, should answer that. If not, I can, if not, there's a good phone number and some good people out there. And I believe that's all I have. Did you remember what you were gonna say, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, it was about water.
Oh, go for it.
But it's water in the gutter. And I know that there's been concern mentioned in the past about people that discharge into the gutter and that the city allows it for sump pumps or something, but that they have to pay. But then what happens when it's always wet and becomes green and mossy and a problem, right? And so the question is, is there anything that can be done from the city side so that it's not a continual source of green, mossy, smelly yuck?
Yeah, uh, shoot Mr. Anderson, Mr. Dixon, the address on that. I know there's one on Monroe that's a spring that comes up right through the meter and is always green, it's a spring that nobody can do anything about, but, but I'm sure there's others that are not the case, so. Yeah, shoot them that. And then, I'm glad you, I went back to you. Uh, Chief, we talked about parked trailers, is that a code enforcement? Is that a police, that's a police thing? Okay. Park tra, parked trailers is a police thing?
Yeah, I was gonna mention that, like.
Yeah.
We'll have that conversation, but at any time you're approached by a resident or you guys see things, feel free to just give me a call, let us know, we'll send someone out there. If it is a safety issue especially, right, our officers will show up and cite them or encourage them to get things moved.
I can't know if that was a code or a police.
Yeah, so please let the, the residents know, just be like, hey, call the police department, let them know you have a concern on that corner and our, our guys can go out and respond right away.
Yeah, we recently painted some red, we worked with the owner of the car wash.
Thirty-seventh?
Cliff's Car Wash down on Thirty-seventh and we added a couple of signs and painted some red because people were blocking the exits there.
There's one on seven fifty. There's one on seven fifty east, it's been, yeah.
When I get bored, retire, I'll start painting fire hydrants.
They didn't even move it. I don't know if it's moved again, but they've moved it.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, trailer and truck.
Well, that's all I have. Thank you, everybody, for your, your attention, your presence, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, thank you, all in favor. All right.